...to order for the regular meeting on Monday, June the 11th, 2018. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Breimeyer is absent tonight. Commissioner Handwelder?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Commissioner Ellis?
Here.
Commissioner Plank?
Here.
Commissioner Schramman?
Here.
And Chair Barker?
Here. And do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion no approval.
And a second?
Support.
And any discussion? All in favor of accepting the approval of the agenda as written, please say aye.
Aye.
The approval, or the agenda stands approved. And do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, May 14th, 2018, our regular meeting?
I'll make the motion that we approve those.
I'll vote.
Second.
And discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
And both same time? Minutes stand accepted?
Chair Barker?
Yes.
We need a motion to excuse Kelly as well.
Aye.
Motion to excuse Kelly? Support.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Kelly stands excused. Beyond the agenda items, is there any comment from the public beyond the agenda items? Thank you.
There is no old business and new business. The first order of business is a, we will open a public hearing for an R2 rezoning of 1,100 siblings. And do we have the representatives? Todd, is it Todd?
Yes.
Could you please come on up and just in a couple of minutes here, just kind of tell us what you want to do?
Sure. I'm a local builder at Vance Homes, Advanced Building Construction, been building in the whole area for the last 18, 19 years. Saw that as an opportunity to follow through with the master plan and convert that to residential housing units. So, working with Josh McCracken, the realtor here, to make that happen. So, wanted to get it rezoned for R2, and then from there, we'll probably figure out what we're going to do next, but probably split it into a couple of different parcels, maybe two or three, and build some single-family residences on it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And we'll go through our items here, so we may have you, sit close.
All right.
In the easiest way. Ma'am, do you want to say anything at this point, or? No, okay. Thank you. Can you walk us through it?
Sure. As Mr. West said, this parcel is located at 1,100 siblings. It was at one point part of a larger parcel, it was part of the parcels of the south, which is the Tupper, which is currently the Calvary Christian Reformed Church. It's been there for quite a while, and it's, so far as I know, it hasn't really been used for anything. It's been sitting there, it's owned by the church for a long time. Because it's owned by the church, it was zoned to the district that the city has for most of its churches and schools and institutions, which is the zone district for public facilities. And so, we processed the land division for this one parcel probably a couple of months ago, and we had had some conversation about how to split it, and what would be permissible, and what you could build there, and so forth. Subsequent to all that, we felt that the best zoning classification for this property was R2, which is what they have proposed here. Typically, caution to typically, in some zoning ordinances, there are standards that sort of we apply, like we apply for special land uses and site plan reviews. There are standards that we apply for rezoning too. Your ordinance does not have those, which is not terribly unusual to me. But absent that, we often just look at some general standards from the planning perspective that we find are helpful in guiding the planning commission to make the decision. To me, the most important question to ask is, is the rezoning consistent with the master plan? So, we're going from this public facilities district to an R2, what does the master plan say about that, as far as future land use map goes, and goals and objectives, and some of the other statements in the plan? The master plan, in this case, does correspond with that R2 zoning district, or something very similar to that. With the master plan, I think it's called the single-family 2. It talks about permits up to four and a half dwelling units per acre, appropriate land uses, including our single-family residential dwelling units and uses that may be compatible with single-family dwelling units, such as schools, churches, municipal and civic buildings. For that reason, and just given its surroundings, we feel like that that makes sense for the rezoning to R2 to go forward. Another one of the standards that we often look at is, are there any incompatible, are there any incompatibilities possible with what's surrounding it? So, what we have to keep in mind whenever we rezone a property, is even though we have seen some sketches from Mr. West, considering maybe some two-family units on the property, is even if you build exactly what he's anticipating building, or what he said he was going to build, it's possible that at some point in the future, you know, anything else permitted in R2 could theoretically go there. So, we have to think a little bit wider when it comes to rezoning. So, again, generally speaking, the R2 district is probably a little bit more restrictive in terms of land use than the public facilities district, primarily because the public facilities district allows for churches and schools and some of these institutional and civic kind of uses that, well, they're not necessarily problematic, but they can often, you know, sometimes they don't fit as well into a low-density neighborhood if it's a, if it's something that involves a lot of parking, and there's a lot of sight lighting, or something like that, I can see maybe some issues coming forward. I think single-family 2, or the single-family residential 2 zoning district makes sense here, because it's surrounded on, to the north, to the east, and to the west, the property is bounded by all other parcels that are also zone R2. And then, you know, also, and kind of piggybacking along with number two, the third standard that we look at is whether the rezoning would have any sort of negative impacts on adjacent uses. So, occasionally, if this comes up, if somebody wanted to rezone this parcel, say, I don't know, commercial or industrial, not only would we look at the issues with the master plan, but we would also look at what could go there, and how that would potentially interact positively or negatively with the surrounding parcels. Again, because there's so much consistency here, because it's surrounded on three sides by the same zoning district, we feel like that's definitely an issue. So, our recommendation to the planning commission was to approve the request. Because this is a rezoning request, this is a recommendation to city council, they would have to approve it at their next meeting, and we'd have to publish a notice of adoption, and so forth. So, it would be probably another month before it was effective and official, if you will, but I don't see any issues with it moving forward. The zoning makes all kinds of sense. This would make it more compliant with the master plan, as opposed to less compliant, asking for anything that's unusual, or is not contemplated by the plan. So, for those reasons, we feel like it should be approved.
Commissioners, any questions of Andy at all? Any questions on the applicant?
How many houses are there to be there?
Just one.
We really can't say, is that correct? Because this is a rezoning?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not part of the application. Yeah, I mean, he can, he could theoretically, depending on what he builds there, he could probably split it into three lots, assuming he has that many splits left. I don't know if he's checked with the assessor and see how commonly more times he can divide that parcel. If he could divide it into three parcels, he could probably fit three single, or maybe three two-family homes there. So, you'd be looking at a max of six or eight units on that parcel, I would guess. In the R2 district, you can do single-family and two-family by right. Multi-family buildings would be a special land use, so if you wanted to do an apartment building or something on that parcel, that is possible. I don't know, you know, block area-wise, exactly what would work, but there are a few different options there, none of them are, you know, from a density standpoint, it's, I don't really see it being anything alarming, or anything like that.
Let's go through one, two, and three then, and let's take a voice vote on that, and then we'll take a roll call on the phone call. Okay? Number one there is the proposed zoning, rezoning, consistent with the master plan. One of the things I saw there was appropriate land uses in single-family 2 actually even includes churches. So, on all four sides, the rezoning comes closer than what it is right now. Plus, it makes use of a piece of land that I believe is sat there for, I mean, basically, I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's been there for, it's been there for a long time, yeah.
Great for soccer, and, oh yeah, soccer practice, I should say. But the point is, is that it's actually closer to that single-family 2 zoning than it is the above. All in favor of agreeing to that it meets the proposed rezoning, consistent with the master plan, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same thing? Okay. Are any of the potential land uses incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood? And again, driving through there, there's absolutely nothing that would say the opposite, in my opinion. Any other discussion? Again, all in favor of saying that it meets the point two here, any of the potential land uses incompatible with surrounding neighborhoods? The answer is no. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing? Finally, would the rezoning result in any negative impact on the surrounding area? I cannot see any at all. Anybody else? Any thoughts?
Most good.
And again, let's take a voice vote on the third one, to be consistent. Would the rezoning result in any negative impact on the surrounding area? And again, the answer is no. All in favor of accepting that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing? Then finally, we will do a voice vote on the recommendation that we pass on the approval for the proposed rezoning to the city council, as is. And I'll make that motion that we do that, that we pass it on to the rezoning. Is there a second?
I'll support.
Okay, and any discussion? And Sue, will you do a voice roll call, please?
Commissioner Breimeyer is absent. Commissioner Handwelder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Congratulations. We will pass it on to the city council for adoption.
Thank you. Andy, you think they'll be on the meeting this month, not a week?
I probably soon.
Yeah, we'll put it down in the agenda for council. I have to get it approved by our city manager first, but I'm sure we can get it on the agenda for the next city council meeting, which is a week from today.
Thank you all very much for your, have a good evening.
Thank you. Obviously, we'll close that public hearing.
Are you going to be at the council meeting, in case there's some questions?
No. Would you, damn. No, I haven't, so. Let's open up a public hearing then, for chapter nine, which is, again, what we've done consistently here is redoing our zoning ordinance over the course of time. And we're trying to take one chapter at a time, and the idea behind it is, the whole idea behind it is updated according to new state laws, in some cases even federal laws, as we'll find out with signs tonight. And also, to make it easier for our public to actually interpret our zoning ordinances, know what they're doing, and finally, hopefully, giving our zoning ordinance enforcement people a little bit better insight as to what the planning commission thinks. So, in this case, what we'll do is, we'll open up a public hearing for chapter 19, and then we'll do chapter 20 separately, we'll do them separately. And again, what we will be doing is referring this to the city council for actual adoption. They can either adopt it, say no, or turn it back to us for revisions, or revise it themselves, I guess. So, those are kind of the options. So, with that, let's go to chapter 19, we'll open the public hearing, and Andy, will you kind of walk us through if there's any, I think we've gone through this enough.
Yes. Thank you. There are no additional changes to either of these chapters since the last time that we met. And maybe we had some discussion, I know, in April on signings, you made a few decisions then, I brought those back, and maybe you thought they looked good. And so, this, after the May meeting, we scheduled the hearing, and so these are unchanged since then. I guess just to briefly review some of the highlights here on chapter 19, we made some changes to section 19.02, related to the location of parking areas. A lot of it is just, again, like you said, Bruce, it's just clarifying, requiring that parking areas and driveways be hard-surfaced. We modified the language in 1902B, particularly in subsection two, I thought the language that was there was a little confusing, that allows in the C2 in mixed-use districts to allow for folks to count public parking towards their parking minimum. That makes sense in the downtown, where the lots are small, the buildings tend to take up the entire lot. And so, it does really make sense to require people to, you know, fit all that parking out to a parcel that might be completely and totally covered by a building. In section 19.03, we have a few minor changes to subsection B here, as far as parking lot surfacing, you know, we had this language that says that it must be of similar durability to asphalt or cement. We, under subsection C, we increased the height of the light pole, the maximum height to 20 feet instead of 15 feet. Subsection C2 here, we just added a reference to the lighting section of the zoning ordinance, that's 4.24, and that's just a readability type of thing. In subsection D, we reduced the setback of the parking area to a minimum of 10 feet instead of 20 feet. We found over the years that 20 feet on some of the lots in the city, especially the lots here in the more grid part of town, that 20 feet eats up an awful lot of space. And so, when parking has seemed to be at a premium, you know, we felt like it made some sense to bring that down to 10 feet. 10 feet is still requires, you know, some landscaping and some greenery there, but it does hopefully allow for more efficient use of land. Let's see, continuing here in subsection, let's see, in section 1904, you know, we just made a few minor modifications here under subsection D. If there's a change of use of a building, it can require additional parking, so folks typically need to get a zoning compliance permit if it's the same building, but the use of the building is changing. And obviously, some uses require very, very little parking, other uses require a lot. And so, they will need to make sure that they are providing reasonable amount of parking for a new use, even if the building itself and the site is otherwise going to be largely We deleted subsection J, and the reason why we did that is that we allowed in this new subsection J, on the top of page four, to allow for shared parking. So, what it said before was that if you have two separate buildings that are using shared parking, two separate uses, and they're using shared parking, you just add up the requirements from building one and building two, and that's how much parking you need. You know, we found that that often results in an awful lot of asphalt. And so, we allow for the staff and/or the planning commission to authorize a reduction of up to 50% in that total number of parking spaces, because in a lot of instances, the peak parking kind of overlaps. So, maybe for one use, peak parking is made five, like if it's an office or a bank or something, and for like even residential, like restaurant, peak parking is often after hours. And so, when there's that overlap there, you don't need all of that parking, it's just, it just sits there, and a lot is always half-full. We would rather see it used, and so, we allow kind of, at the city's discretion a little bit, that that number, that maximum number can be reduced. Under item L, this just allows for supplemental bike parking. There are a number of trails here that folk can bike on, and a little kind of, a little bit of a hub with a bunch of non-motorized connections. So, we suggested the addition of some bike parking that would allow, in certain instances, someone to kind of, to remove five vehicle spaces, if you provide bicycle parking to that.
Andy, with the bike parking too, by having this in here, if after a couple of years we decide we want to amend it, it's much easier to amend it, because we have this in here, is that right? I mean, if we wanted to say, you know, it could replace 20, or 40%, or something like that, we can make that change to make it more effective, relatively easy. If you don't have it in here, then you've got to write a little piece.
Yeah, I mean, I think it might be a little bit easier to, moving forward, to at least have applicants comfortable with the concept. They might find that it doesn't work for them now, but, you know, in 10 years, it might be a very attractive option for them. And so, I think this also helps in that regard.
And Andy?
Yeah.
That was motorcycle parking, right? When you say bike parking, are you talking pedal bike?
Bicycle. Yes. Yes, and it says bicycle in here too. Bicycle parking and racks. Any other questions on that one? On item M, this is another kind of, we've been doing this more lately, is that in a lot of our ordinances, instead of dictating a specific hard minimum for parking, sometimes that, that's hard to do. Sometimes someone will say, "Look, I need five spots," but the ordinance requires me to have 25 spots. So, they have to put in 25 spots, even though they're never going to use it, it's just a lot of, again, additional impervious surface, and additional expense on part of the applicant that is not necessary. So, if the planning commission receives satisfactory and compelling evidence or information from the applicant that says, "Look, this standard makes no sense, I only need X number of spaces," whether it's more or less than what's in the ordinance, this allows the planning commission kind of, on a discretionary basis, to accept something other than what's prescribed in the table, which we'll get to in a here and minute. Section 1905 allows for deferred parking, so that's, again, this is, there's a lot of flexibility in here, as you can see. So, deferred parking is when there's an applicant that's, let's say, the ordinance requires them to have 50 spaces, and they don't think they need 50, but they might, so they put in 20, and then they kind of reserve an area on their site for the other 30. This allows them to do that, as long as they sort of set aside a space, where if they need a space in the future, they can just put it in and be done with it. It allows for that, so again, you're not making someone put in more parking than they need right away. Section 1906, landscaping and design. Most of this stuff is just the design of the parking lots. If you recall, there was a bunch of landscaping stuff in here, which we moved to the general provisions chapter when we redid all of that, and there's a big landscaping chapter in general provisions now, which contains almost all of the parking lot landscaping language. We did not make many changes to the table in 19.07, except for a couple of instances. We bumped the numbers up a little bit. For example, under restaurants, about 2/3 of it's out on page six, that was one space per 75, we bumped that up a little bit. And there were just a few other, you know, typos and other numbers that didn't quite make sense, that were, even in comparing them to the IT books, they were pretty high as far as the number of parking spaces that they required, so we changed those a little bit. And that's about it for this chapter. We didn't make any changes to the off-street loading requirements, those have worked fairly well for us, so, as you said, Bruce, this is a recommendation to council, if the commission is so inclined to recommend it this evening, if there's something that you want to work on further, or it doesn't make sense to you, we can, of course, go back and revise it, you're under a little obligation to recommend approval tonight, but that pretty much sums it up, and if there are questions or anything, let me know, we can talk about it.
Commissioners, any questions of Andy?
I'm most good.
I have a question. Existing driveways that are gravel and not, or gravel or driveways that are dust-purposed, I think that's the wording? They're grained by the din, or, I mean?
Yeah, they have to worry about it. I mean, if at some point they needed to, if it got so bad that they had to do something, then they might have to pay them, but for the time being, happy would be, it's, we wouldn't be running around, you know, telling everyone to pave their driveways or whatever.
Any other questions? With that then, we'll close the public hearing, and I would like to make a motion that we forward to the city council for adoption of chapter 19 for zoning ordinance.
Make a motion forward. Paul, second?
So, we're closed. And I'll, again, I'll make the motion to propose that we forward this on to the city council for adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I didn't realize I didn't close it officially. I should have. Sorry. With that, let's take a voice vote on any other discussion before we take the voice vote. Sue, will you do a voice vote, please?
Commissioner Breimeyer is absent. Commissioner Handwelder?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman?
Yes.
And Chair Barker?
Yes. Thank you. And therefore, I'll open the public hearing on chapter 20. And that would be on sign, so Andy, you want to walk us through this, please?
Again, bike parking, we've been working on both of these for about the same amount of time. Signs was a little bit more challenging to work on, just because, you know, the reason, this was done in 2013, I mean, it was, the ordinance was totally replaced almost with newer language. The only reason why I were proposing to changes again was the 2015 Supreme Court case that was M. B. Gilbert, and where the United States Supreme Court stated essentially that any kind of content-based regulation of signage, or anything, when you're either compelling someone to say something on a sign, or you're regulating something differently because of the content of the sign, is an unlawful regulation of speech. And so, as a practical matter, what most communities probably, like in the United States, have done, or are doing, are going through their zoning ordinances and kind of stripping out all sorts of regulations in their sign chapters that regulate signs differently based on what kind of content they have. So, by way of example, there are, for example, real estate signs. If they are, they were defined, and I guess are presently defined in your ordinance as a sign that advertises property for sale, well, only way you can tell if that's a real estate sign is you have to look at what it says, and you have to read the content of the sign, and regulate the sign based on what the sign says. But we can't do that anymore, so we have to find a way to, you know, accomplish some degree of regulation. Other sorts of regulations for signs, like the sign. Other sorts of regulations for signs, like the size and the area and illumination, all of that other stuff, we're fine to kind of regulate however we want. So if we want to, you know, regulate signs in our commercial district differently from how we regulate them in our residential areas, that's fine. If we want to allow signs to be lit in some areas and unlit in other areas, that's fine. Height is fine. Location on the street, setbacks, all that stuff, we can regulate any of it, just not what it says, and we can't base our regulations on what they say. So virtually every change that we made to this chapter twenty is attempt to make this content neutral. And so in some cases, it seems a little goofy the way that we've gone about doing this, but, you know, it works. And as a general note, I guess, with both this one, probably the parking on two pieces have not been through the city attorney's office yet, so you'll need to look at these. I don't know, then they will make the agenda for the next council meeting. It might be the through, or the, I mean, it's be.
The first one of July.
Yeah, the July meeting might be a more appropriate time for that. But other signs, like on page two, we have a new definition for a feather sign. That's just a newer type of signs come up in the last couple of years. It wasn't really contemplated. At the first of this, we added a definition for it. It's another type of temporary sign. We added some pictures for what a portable sign is, because some people found that confusing the way they would fit the definition of what was written. You know, a picture is worth a thousand words, so instead of writing a thousand words, we just put a couple of pictures in here to clearly show what that is. We made some modification to the definition of a vehicle sign. This is primarily just to read a little bit more consistently with the other definitions in the ordinance. All of the, you know, signs prohibited are pretty much the same. We don't allow for abandoned signs or signs that are in disrepair, air-filled signs, signs with moving parts. So if it's got stuff spinning all around, that's not something that we're going to allow. Signs located on the roof, we don't allow for vehicle signs, and when someone just like takes a car and paints it up and just leaves it in one spot for an extended period of time, that's not something that we would allow. Noting, of course, that if it's just like, oh, I don't know, like a Comcast employee's van or something like, we're not going to intend for that a sign, just because it has it painted on there, he's driving around. That's, just sits in front of the Comcast office for six months, then that's going to be a different conversation. But if it's something that's irregularly used, we're not going to worry about it as far as vehicle signs go. Where we really get into a lot of the content, content stuff is into item, or section twenty point oh six. This is on page six, the category starts. So we have standards for things like government signs, and this document only illustrates what's changed since your last meeting, since there was so much of it. But for example, I mentioned real estate signs earlier. So if you read here about halfway down, twenty point oh six, item A three, a real estate sign before would have said that it's a sign that advertises a property for sale. Now we allow any kind of temporary sign on a property being offered for sale, rental or lease, when not more than thirty-two square feet of area and feet in height. So what this means is that if a property is for sale, they can put any kind of sign on if they want. They can put one sign on there, they can say anything they want, it doesn't matter. We're assuming, I guess, and hoping a little bit, assuming mostly, that it's going to say for sale, you know, whatever, they'll say Coldwell Banker, or Richard Hathaway, or whatever. But again, there's no content regulation in here anymore, it just says, if your property's for sale, you can have a sign. They can use that sign for any purpose they want. Same thing with number four. There used to be a definition, any type of sign called a construction sign, where if there was a construction site, a lot of times they'll see the signs that they'll flock on the site that has, maybe you pictured the building, and who's paying for it, who's financing, the contractors and engineers and architects are, and all this kind of stuff. Again, we retrieve those signs differently because of what they said and what kind of information was displayed on them. So now, again, a construction site can have really any kind of temporary sign they want, up to thirty-two square feet in area, and not have any height bigger than eight feet, but they can only have one. So if they want to have their construction sign, that's fine, but they can't have anything else. If they want to have something else that says, you can have a political message, or just an opinion, or any kind of statement they want, that's fine too, but then they can't have the typical construction information sign. So that's what we've done a lot of the, a lot of the way through here. Number five, we handle political signs the same way. A temporary sign up to six square feet can be located on any parcel, up to ninety days before an election. This is in addition to any other kind of sign that they would be able to have, and that's something that we would not require a permit for. So obviously during election season, and I'm sure we'll see it again, I'm already seeing it now a little bit locally, but not here locally, but other places, just local elections, that there's some political signs already coming out. Well, you can have one of those, but we're not going to tell you that it is a political sign. We're not going to regulate something because it has a political message differently than we would anything else. So if you want to have, before an election, you can have a temporary sign, six square feet, and you can put it on there, and that's fine. And then they have to take that sign down ten days after the election. So this is the kind of thing that we did all the way through here on number ten. There was a sign called a temporary special event sign on page seven now, where if there was like a garage sale, or a state sale, or something, again, the definition for temporary special event sign had all this content stuff in it. So now, again, if there's a garage sale, you're going to have a sign. The sign, again, the sign can say anything, but it's only, you're only allowed to have that additional sign if you have a garage, the Lawrence Day Sale, or something like that, under property. Same thing with item eleven, home occupation sign. You can have a two, if you have a permitted home occupation, you can have a two-square-foot wall sign. So a sign two square feet on the building can say whatever we want, presumably is going to state the name of the home occupation, they usually do, but we can't mandate that or regulate it all based on any of that. We did some additional work with the flag item, because again, ordinance, sign of any nation, state, community, city, community, organization, so on and so forth, that's all content stuff again, so we can't, we can't say that. So all that came out as part of the content-based, I guess, scrubbing that we did here. Fourteen, sandwich boards, this is mostly unchanged, except for just a couple of little things, just for clarification, those were addressed previously. We do not allow sandwich boards to be illuminated, which is addressed on the top of page eight. Temporary signs, we did have some discussion, I think in April, and then we showed it to you in May, about when there's like a grand opening, or a big event of some sort. On item A five here, and we talked about this, to allow someone to have up to three additional temporary signs on their property, when displayed in connection with a grand opening, or, you know, some kind of event like that. So when there's a grand opening, okay, you can have additional signage and flags, or other signs, or whatever kind of stuff they want, but after that event, then they would need to come down. The other stuff about permitting is unchanged, the portable sign stuff, I believe, is unchanged. The changeable copy language has not been changed. We made a few minor adjustments to the stuff on page ten. So the tables on page ten, if you haven't looked at these, they just kind of go through sections A, B, C, and then D and E on page eleven, just kind of walk through the permanent types of signs that are allowed in each zoning district. So if you're downtown, in the C two or mixed-use district, which is where we are right now, you would be allowed, as shown in the table on the bottom of page ten, one projecting sign, so it's a sign that knocks the side of the building and sticks out, it hangs over the street, it projects over the street. You can have one of those, and you can have either a wall or a marquee sign. A wall sign is just a sign that's applied on the wall. A marquee is a sign where there's like an awning or something, and there's a sign on the awning. You can have one of those, but not both, in addition to your projecting sign if you're downtown. If you're in the C three district, there's a little bit different standards, because obviously, a projecting sign on a business that's thirty feet up the road is not going to be of much use, so we allow for ground signs, pole signs, and things like that. And that's on the table on the top of page eleven. Same kind of thing, so we allow one ground or freestanding sign. So really, ground and freestanding is kind of the same, but it's, if it's a ground sign, you can do, or either one can be forty square feet, or a little bit less if it's on a great narrow lot. You can have one sign basically out by the street, and then if they're permitted, you have an additional sign on the building. So this is all the typical stuff that we worked on recently farther west on Main Street, like the Credit Union, for example. They have one pole sign that's fifteen or twenty feet tall, and they have one wall sign, which is the sign, their little Lake Michigan logo is on that for building, and those are double-two signs. They were permitted to have.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What if it's on the interior of the building? It's not regulated at all.
They can do whatever. I mean, if it's, you know, if it's like a, I mean, even a window sign, you can occupy up to half of the window space, and we don't, we don't require a permit for that, you can kind of do whatever. If it's a sign on the interior of a site, like when you go to a fast food place, they have like the reader boards, and, or if you go to a larger industrial site, they have, you know, shipping and receiving is this way, and customer parking, you know, all that kind of stuff, that internal stuff, we don't really regulate that much at all. So there's a little bit in here that talks about that, but generally speaking, it's not something we need to.
Any other questions of Andy on the chapter twenty signs? With that, I'd have a motion to close the public hearing portion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And support.
Second.
And discussion? Public hearing stands closed. I would like to propose a motion that we remove to accept the chapter twenty as written here. Actually, I do have one question of Andy. Does the city council get the redline copy, just like this?
Yeah, they get whatever they want, but I think last time, we gave them one clean copy and one redline copy.
Both, both.
So they can see what we've changed. Because the structure with the sign chapter, there's a lot of changes in there.
Right.
And they'll need to see those. And the attorney, I would expect he'll have some relatively minor adjustments to the signs chapter specifically, because it has been fairly, not so much here, but just overall, there's been a lot of attention paid to that, that case and how those are treated. So I expect him to have some input there that'll be relatively minor, but it'll be good to have him to go up at it.
And again, our whole purpose of doing this is to update not only the state ordinances, but also federal ordinances in this case particularly.
Yeah, the, you know, some of the, some of the stuff that's in here now essentially is unenforceable. I mean, if somebody pushes back on any of these things that we try to regulate based on how the ordinance is written, if they really wanted to fight about it, we just have to roll over and let it go. And so I'd much rather have an ordinance that stands up to that, and is something that the city can defend, if it needs to, and not, not have to worry about, well, if this guy pushes back in this instance, or if this gets challenged, then, you know, we're out of luck. I'd rather have something that's just consistent with the interpretation of the laws, and is defendable that way.
Thanks, Andy. I, again, I'll make a motion that we accept the public hearing, or the data for chapter twenty as written, and that we pass it on to the city council for adoption. Do I have a second?
I'll support.
Any discussion? Sue, roll call a vote, please.
Commissioner Frank Meyer Zansen, Commissioner Ken Waldner.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you very much. And then you guys will let us know when it'll be before city council?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. That might get you off the hook, Marty.
I doubt it.
Okay. Staff reports? Sue, anything?
I've nothing further.
Andy, anything?
No, nothing further.
Okay. Commissioner remarks.
I have a good.
The only thing I have is that I will ask Andy to give us a list of the remaining zoning ordinances. And I think we're basically down to districts and definitions. Definitions will be last. So I think Andy will set us up so that we'll do like residential one time, downtown another time, probably P U D a third time, and maybe commercial or something along that line. So that will kind of split those up. And again, our intent is to be able to pass them on to the city council in chunks, so that way that they will have an easier handle on it. And I think it really gives us everybody a fair chance to look at it, too, instead of just trying to do, you know, all twelve districts at one time. So that's kind of the idea behind it. And so Andy, you'll give us a list of those maybe in our next meeting, kind of the direction we'll go, at least?
Yep.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Thanks, everybody, for slugging through the, these two chapters. And we're making progress, though. And it's really important, because obviously, the city needs a light to stand on if somebody comes before them, and that's what we try to at least provide. And there are updates that we need to do because of the state laws that are in federal business, in the sign case particularly, that impact it. So that's why it's critical for us to do that. So we'll stay on task, keep up with that. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll share the adjourn. Support.
All in favor?
Yes.
Let's do it. All right. We stand adjourned.